Good evening. Adequate notice of this PWS and executive meeting setting for time, date, and location has been approved in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act on January 10, 2022 by prominently posting a copy on the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record to Wayne today, tapped into Wayne.net, the municipal clerk, and posted on the district website. Thank you. Roll call Mr. Moffett.
I'll turn the motion to reconvene.
Mr. Pavlak, this is Kumara.
Call roll. Mr. Fatao?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumara?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mr. Prasakos?
Present.
And Mrs. Putnam?
Here.
The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of March 3, 2022 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. We are now going to have the flag salute in a moment of silence, please. We're going to dedicate it to the Ukraine.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So during this public work session, we're going to discuss some very important topics
and share quite a bit of information with the board and with the community. So we have two presentations. The first is the first public input on the budget presented by our business administrator, Mr. Moffett. The second presentation will be completed by our school architect, John Carton, who will be sharing possible projects the board might consider as part of a bond referendum, but some other news from around the district. I feel as though we're taking a turn for the better and we're moving away from responding to the pandemic and now spending more time and effort with the pandemic recovery. First and foremost, the positive change is due to the relative absence of COVID in our schools. As it stands, we have only eight students right now who have recently tested positive for COVID and no staff members. Yesterday, I distributed a letter to all members of our school community regarding an important milestone in our pandemic recovery, with the most notable change being that our students and staff will have the option of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask at school and on school buses starting on Monday, March 7. Due to the dramatic reduction in COVID cases and the reduced need for testing, we're reducing the hours and days when this testing will be available here in districts. Students and staff will continue to be able to test all day on Mondays. Staff will be able to test on site on Tuesdays. Wednesday afternoon hours have been eliminated since very few tests were being administered on that day. So this is good news because, again, the community is using much less of these services because of the absence of COVID. After hearing concerns from the community and reviewing their requests to reestablish the honor roll, we're happy to report that we're going to be moving ahead, and later tonight when we do the committee reports, you're going to hear a little bit more about the honor roll and what we'll be doing about that. The district is undergoing the New Jersey Department of Education process for monitoring and accountability known as CUSAC. Yesterday, our facilities were inspected. The state monitoring team visited Wayne Valley, Anthony Wayne Middle School, Pines Lake Elementary, Tunes Day Elementary, and it appears that we did well in this first stage of the in-district monitoring. The next of the in-district monitoring starts on March 14 with a document review at Central Office. One of my goals for this evening was to share information with the board about where we are with our district goals. So I'm required to provide a mid-year update on our goals and any more formal presentation about our goal attainment that will be delivered at the end of the school year in June. The 2022-2023 school year is just around the corner, so it is important to start discussing possible goals for the new school year, and I will share some possible goals we may wish to pursue in the future. This year, the Wayne schools had three district goals, which included some serious undertakings. The first of these goals was probably the most challenging and far-reaching of the goals. It was a goal written to support the pandemic recovery, which unfortunately started that way, but turned back to a pandemic response with the surge in cases we experienced around the holidays. So board members do have a goal packet, and so you're able to go through the goals and follow along. We can provide just a general overview, but within that goal packet, you have specific details and more information. So we're on goal one. We felt that one of our biggest accomplishments for this year was to remain open for in-person instruction. Even when the pandemic was at its historic worst in January, the effort required a lot of effort by the community and a tremendous commitment from the staff. In the end, with the shortages of subs and the number of COVID cases, one employee deciding to stay home on some days was the difference between having the school open or closed. So we were so close to closing on so many days in January, but we found a way, and I wanted to thank the staff for their overall commitment to the schools and to our students because we all understand that the best way to help our students feel a sense of normalcy is by remaining open. The goal also involved a number of other actions, including the identification of learning gaps against the New Jersey student learning standards, a tiered system of response, mental health counseling, adverse childhood experiences training, and other activities that likely will develop into return-to-school plans and updating those plans as guidance changes. The second goal is the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Goal. We recognize this goal is not without controversy. One of the ways we adjusted as an administration based on the concerns of the community was to host a parent forum in August of 2021. While the forum was contentious, parents were able to learn more about this goal along with some other related issues. The forum was interactive and participants were able to ask questions. Many of you, as board members, attended that forum. The prior DEI goal included a review of our Human Resources Department practices. Last year, the district participated in a number of job fairs to attract a diverse candidate pool. This year, the district continued this work and partnered with Montclair State University to meet two needs. First need is continue to attract top talent from our local universities. The second need is to take action to address the severe teacher shortages. We are in the process of developing a teacher academy for our high school students to attract them to the profession and give them a head start with their college education. The program, once established, will allow students to earn a significant number of college credits while students are still in high school. During the fall of 2021, the district developed a checklist, which is currently available and in use by district employees to ensure that resources available in our schools meet the requirements of board policies. The final goal for this year has to do with planning for the future. The architecture presentation tonight is one important part of planning for the future. The district retreat held in December was another important part of this goal. Hearing from our demographer about the impact the proposed affordable housing project will have on Wayne's schools is another important part of this goal. So at this point, I have to deliver a required report. It's called the Student Safety Data System, and it's from September 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. So basically, this is the semi-annual report of incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse, offenses, harassment, intimidation, and bullying which took place in our schools during reporting period one from September 1 through December 31. Pursuant to statute, I'm required to report to the Board of Education two times per year in a public meeting all acts of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying which occurred during the previous reporting period. Tonight, I am reporting the following incidents that took place during reporting period one as reported to the New Jersey Department of Education through the Student Safety Data System. The SSDS is what it's known as, and it's replacing the former Electronic Violence and Vandalism System, once known as the EVVRS. It also requires each school district to report more and different data than in the past. For example, all HIV investigations, both alleged and confirmed, must now be reported. In addition, all removals, like suspensions for disciplinary reasons, must be reported for both general education and special education students. So the numbers being reported may appear higher in some instances than the totals reported in prior years. Further reason is tough to draw conclusions on any of these increases. Our schools continue to maintain an excellent record of investigation, documenting, reporting, and handling incidents in a timely and efficient manner. For reporting period one, throughout the district, there were incidents, 12 incidents of violence. This includes assaults, fights, and threats. Two incidents of vandalism, zero weapons offenses, six incidents of substance abuse, that is substance possession suspected, refused exam, used confirmed, and/or sale or distribution cases. There were 62 general code of conduct incidents, which led to educational removal, and 18 confirmed incidents of HIV, at a total of 59 investigated alleged HIV cases for this reporting period. Eighteen confirmed HIV cases involve categories of race, four: ancestry, ethnicity, and national origin, one; religion, zero; gender, eight; sexual orientation, three; power imbalance, zero; or other distinguishing characteristics, two. Cases were investigated by the school-level anti-bullying specialists with guidance and support by principals and district anti-bullying coordinator. Consequences and remediation efforts for offending students included individual counseling, student and/or parent conferences, and discipline in accordance with the district code of conduct, remedial measures for targeted students, including counseling, support services, parent conferences, schedule changes, stay-away agreements, teacher aid monitors during the school day, adult-student pairings, and other monitoring measures. In addition, each school has instituted programming, including the district-wide No Place for Hate, intended to reduce bullying and improve school climate. The other thing related to safety that I wanted to mention is that tonight, at this public work session, the board has the opportunity to vote on new security cameras. So that is item 07. It is basically a complete renovation of our school's security system for the camera part. And so these cameras will be installed in all of our schools, and I can't get into the details, they're quite an enhancement over the current system that we have. So that is a major improvement for the district. It will make all of our students and staff members safer, and they're also, they're outstanding cameras because they also allow the police and law enforcement to have access and view all parts of our buildings very quickly and easily, including from smartphones. So the last thing I have to report is the HIV report. I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying in Wayne Township public schools. There were three incidents of HIV investigated since my last report, and one of those cases was deemed to be an actual case of HIV. That's a lot.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The one thing I did want to, I forgot to mention, sorry about that. With my mid-year goal report, I did want to go towards the end of the mid-year goal report, and I wanted to provide the board with some things to think about, okay? It's like I said, I provided all of you with a summary of where we are with each of these goals, but the end, what I have here is some proposed goals. So now is a good time to start thinking about having our goals for the upcoming school year, start talking about them, because ideally, the district would establish goals for next year in June, so the summer and all of our effort during the summer can go toward beating those goals. So you can see here, the first goal, for, again, more discussion, this is at the very early stages, the details are not really included like I normally would for a goal because it's just, it's a topic, and so it's a starting point for a goal. It is not the finished product, okay? So basically, this is about expanding and refining elementary special education. So the goal will be to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment that would align our certain needs with programs, and also establish new programs or re-envision some of our existing programs. The general idea behind that is that we would do an internal and external review of all of our programs and produce a report with recommendations for the board to consider during the following budget cycle and for planning purposes for the following year. The second goal has to do, we've called it at this point, positioning students for success with college admissions. And so the general idea with this goal is that we understand that college admissions is extremely stressful. It's very difficult, and colleges continue to be more and more selective as the number of people going to college continues on the increase, and the number of applications that each college student submits is increasing. So there was a time when people would submit applications to maybe like three or four colleges. Now it's not uncommon for people to submit applications for 15 to 20 colleges. So that creates a much more competitive environment. The goal is to analyze our system of weighting, so in other words, the weight of each class and how that's calculated towards the GPA. So that's the general idea behind the goal. That's one part of it, but there's more to it because college admissions involves a lot more than GPA and involves a lot more than, you know, the general application. So we also would like, as part of the goal, to consider additional staffing. We believe that the guidance departments require some additional staffing, and so that would be part of that goal. So it's an important step forward for the district. The other part, I'm sorry, for goal three, that goal, if the board chooses to go ahead with a referendum, obviously, this is a significant goal, planning for a referendum, planning projects, planning public relations work, all of that is very important, and you heard from one of the consultants that came to speak to you about just how important that is. The success of any project like this is contingent on getting the community involved, putting together the right projects, looking at the cost of those projects, the need for those projects. So more of that will happen tonight, but if the board wants to move ahead with that, then referendum planning certainly is a worthwhile goal. Goal number four is pandemic recovery. So while we acknowledge that things have improved and that we are moving ahead, the fact is there are still effects from the pandemic that are being felt by both students and staff, and we need to continue to recognize those issues, and we need to continue to provide services, intervention, and support. Last of the goals at this point is the concept of developing our own academies here in district, okay? So, and so these academies are based on something that we have going on already. We have dual-credit high school programs, and so we know that those classes are extremely popular. We know where they fill up very quickly, and we know the benefits that people recognize with those dual-credit programs, so that students walk out of high school with a significant number of college credits also on a transcript and something they can use to transfer easily anywhere in-state and then in a lot of places out-of-state if they choose to go out-of-state. So parents realize that's a huge opportunity for students, and students recognize that as well. So the dual-credit programs are very popular. Based on the popularity of that model and based on the next wave of expansion of the Passaic County Technical Institute, so their goal is to build another high-performing academy, I think it's time the district needs to respond by establishing our own academies. And so the idea is that we would meet recognized industry needs, recruit students, obviously first and foremost from our district, but then after that, we would be able to possibly accept students from outside our district on a tuition basis, and that would be a very helpful thing. So we would attract students, we'd keep students in the district that might consider going to Passaic Tech, and we would also attract students from other districts who would otherwise consider going to Passaic Tech. So we have, we have the staff, we have some of the facilities, we have some work to do, and we'll talk about that a little bit more later, but I think we're in better position to develop high-performing academies, and we believe that we're better equipped to meet the needs of our students who are seeking that kind of academic challenge. So that's another possible goal for the district to pursue. The other thing I would just like to mention is that certainly, this is the beginning of the discussion about goals, there are some of the most important things that we do every year as a board and an administration. Every one of the goals that we've established have been achieved, and so each one of them has led to certain improvements in the school district. And so if you go back over the years, you can see so much of what we enjoy today in the school district, whether it's new math and science programs, there are a childhood center, full-day kindergarten, the list goes on and on, but all of those things that happen that are improvements in the district are the result of these district goals. But it's important for the board to get involved. If there's different things that you would like to see, if there's different types of goals, or maybe there's additions to these goals where you're saying to yourself, you know what? What about this? What about that? So if you like these goals, that's great. If you have more goals in mind, that's fine, too. We're happy to accept suggestions. If you want to send me your suggestions or you want to talk about these goals, please call, please write, and I'll be happy to talk to you about it, but it's an important thing to do, and like I said, it really is kind of an exciting time. There's a lot happening and a lot that's possible.
Mrs. Kazan?
With regard to goal number two, reminded me of a question I had about this competitive application process for colleges and helping parents navigate that process. It's always been kind of a thing that we've requested over the years. We've done seminars here and there, but I really don't know that we're still doing it. So if we could somehow incorporate the parent aspect of this into the goal, I think it would be welcome from the parents and beneficial around. And like you said, guidance counselors, we don't have enough of them. I just remember this from trying to navigate the process with my son and the parents who end up spending thousands of dollars on outside consultants because they just are so overwhelmed with the process. So if we could help them that way, that'd be great. And goal number five, love, love, love. What I don't think people know is that PCTI is an unusual career training education facility. Other counties do it completely differently. They don't poach students from schools to the degree that it happens in Passaic County, and that's always been a problem for me because they're taking our best and brightest, and even if we wanted to start a career technical in-house academy, we would still be competing with them. But I get the value of it because not everybody gets accepted into PCTI. So then you have a child who's a student, not necessarily college-bound learner, who's now with nothing. They're not at PCTI, they're here, they get a diploma, and then what? So yeah, I definitely think we could do more for those students who fall through the cracks in that aspect and do a cost analysis of what we're paying in tuition versus what it would cost us to keep them in-house, and I'm excited about that. I could point out my own nephew who went to school in Essex County, but they had a dual system. He took his gen ed classes at the high school and then bussed up to the career training, and he's now a licensed plumber who makes more than his college graduate brother. So there's something to be said for the trades, and if we could get more of that for our students, I think it would be a very big deal. So thank you for that.
Mrs. Kumara?
I actually did have a comment as well about goal number five. Obviously, the cost around, but besides that, what specific programs are we looking at overall, kind of general here, so that's my other question.
So we have the teacher academy. So that would be one of the programs, but besides that, we would be very interested in running an information technology academy. So we think we have the staff here to be able to run an exceptional information technology academy. We also know that the configuration of Wayne Valley and the way the cafeteria exits into an open area with the plumbing and with the electric there, it would be very easily converted, that space would be converted to a culinary classroom. So we would be able to use that space. It's there, it's flat, it's pouring this lab, there's concrete, I'm sorry, there's electric, there's plumbing, there's drainage, everything that's needed, and the beauty of it is that at least to an extent, we will be able to use some of the profits that we make from our own food service operation to support the construction, at least with the equipment inside.
Right, we have a lot of space. If you know where the kitchen is, there's like a courtyard that can be utilized, closed in and reconfigured to maybe even improve the overall operation of that school at that site, and take advantage of the fact that the kitchen's so close, material supplies will be there, and like the superintendent said, you know, you have all the major electric and plumbing in that area.
And the other thing about a program like that is a commercial kitchen can be a very valuable thing for the community. So based on laws of New Jersey, there are a lot of food service businesses, or food-related businesses, that require commercial kitchens. So you cannot produce any products that you sell from your home. You have to have a publicly available space that inspector can come in at any time and inspect what you're doing. So if there are startup food businesses in the community during the weekend, certainly a commercial kitchen is a very valuable thing because that is your opportunity to produce a product, especially if you're just getting started. So it's kind of like a food industry incubator for the community, and so you could rent it, it could be used for lots of other purposes, but a commercial kitchen would probably gain a lot of traction in the business community, particularly for people who are looking to develop product lines where they would have to cook.
No one else? I just had one other question. Could you present us with an analysis of what types of programs our students are leaving us for in numbers? So if we were going to focus on something in particular, maybe it would be beneficial to know what PCTI is offering that we're not in the highest number of students.
We can do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Kaba. We're going to next portion of our presentations.
Yes, as you heard earlier, the superintendent had indicated this is the first public input on a district budget. Please be reminded that this is a public work session, and a related resolution is listed, again, on the district budget in section 0, number six, which is approval of the 2022-2023 tentative budget and maximum travel expenditures. If you'd like to speak on this item, you may during the first comments section on agenda items only. Unfortunately, we're a little behind schedule. The subject tentative budget has not been finalized. As we wait for our state aid figures to be released by the governor in the state of New Jersey, due to the governor's moving the budget message from February 24th to March 8th, which is next week, state aid numbers have been delayed over those two-week period, and we expect them to be delivered about 48 hours after that budget message has been delivered to the state senate and assembly. Due to this delay in state aid notices and related uploads and software and edit checks, the district has moved forward in planning the budget with a 2% increase in the general fund tax levy and flat aid, state aid assumptions. Generally, non-salary school and department budgets assumptions were relatively flat with notable increases in the following areas: existing contracted and at-will salaries, new teaching positions, special education tuition and related services, special education transportation, health benefits, and energy. We are also monitoring various other accounts to make sure the assumptions are correct and will be updated by the time we get the preload and the state aid notices. The next steps included completing the tentative budget after the state notices have been released would be completed and targeted for the March 16 regular board meeting, which is the second input session. The March 16 board meeting is also the time where the board will take action and consider adopting the tentative budget. After it's been approved, it will be sent to the Passaic County Office, New Jersey Department of Education, for review and approval. Their review and approval is due to the district by April 20. After the Passaic County Office approves of the submitted budget, the Board of Education will advertise the budget information prior to the scheduled May 5 public hearing and final budget adoption. So please just anticipate that the tentative budget will change the next time you see it at the regular meeting as presented on the March 16 meeting. And again, those changes will be due to the fact that we're receiving our state aid notices. With that, if there's no questions at this point?
Yep.
Will our auditor receive a draft or a final budget during this period from now until?
No, normally the procedure, you don't share that normally with your auditors. After approval, final adoption, we do share it, and that is part of their audit review, and that ends up in our annual audit at the end of the year. So the June 30 audit, which is usually delivered December, January, the prior, that'll be where it will be reviewed and made for accuracy against our financial records.
Any other questions? Now we're going to have a presentation from our executive record.
This is John Carton. Hi, it's Amina. I'll be working the clicker.
Yep. Good evening, everybody. This is really a presentation that's a very high-level overview of many of the different projects that we've been talking about since two years. projects that we've been talking about since two years ago. And then there are some updated projects we're going to talk about. Well, just go back and just go through the long-range facility plan, talk a little bit about that, the high and low priority capital and LRFP projects, some increased enrollment due to new developments, how to respond to that with possible additions to schools, some new developing district needs, and then we can go through the past referendum projects that we talked about in December. The long-range facility plan, it is a, basically it's a compilation of information for policies and statistics throughout all of your buildings in the district, which includes some capital improvement projects at each of your facilities. This is one page of one example of one school of, you know, many of the different capital projects. They could be as small as patching your floor, replacing a light fixture to renovating a science lab, for example. And in this example, you could see with Lauren and the facilities team, my team went through each school, and you can see we highlighted some items that have been taken care of. Your LRFP was passed in 2019, so since, in 2019, it was a total of about $77.5 million for all of the schools. And you've executed over the last two years about $60 million worth of projects that then comes off of that list. And what we did with Lauren and my team and Bill, we went to each of the facilities recently and interviewed principals, stakeholders, got some additional information on new projects. So with those, taking some of these long-range facility projects out and including in these capital projects, you're down to about $67.3 million.
If I can just jump in. So we took an opportunity since our retreat to take some time with two new facility directors. They were out and about, as they say, right? So Lauren and Peter have been in and out of our district, looking at various projects to see what other, that their eyes pick up. So Lauren would go with Steve on his team, and they went through each school, met with each principal, and was able to basically update this process. Now, this long-range facility plan is a requirement of the state of New Jersey, which every five years generally they want it to be updated, but we actually update it every time we do a new project. So what John is saying is that we took this as an opportunity to go through everything, make sure we were adding items, we're subtracting items, and then prioritizing at the same time. So that's a Herculean job, and it's just starting. It's by no way over. Matter of fact, it's probably the, really the beginning of a total, you know, top-to-bottom review, which we're going to continue after this meeting. So with that, I'll.
Can you skip to the next one? So what we were looking at, as Bill had mentioned, we have the long-range facility projects and capital projects, and then we prioritize them as high and low priorities. The high priorities were really focusing on building envelope and life safety. So as you can see, the priorities include but not limited to replacing and upgrading existing HVAC equipment, building management controls, which are the controls that work your HVAC equipment, roof and window replacements, new and or replacing generators, site grading, site drainage and paving, and this really high-level, you know, order-of-magnitude budget for those high priorities is $27 to $33 million. And so additional, if the board would like, you know, there would be additional due diligence to dive down deeper into the projects and refine some budgets.
Yeah, in the review, it seemed like there was three major areas. It seemed like roofing was big, windows were big, and the management control system was big. That seemed to be the recurring theme at each site as we were updating.
Correct. Can you go to the low priorities? So low priorities, those projects include but not limited to replacing and upgrading doors and door hardware, minor ceiling repairs, minor electrical upgrades, floor finishes, new and updated signage, paving, kitchen hoods, you know, regrading some drainage. And that budget, rough order, is $2.6 to $4.4 million.
Right, and if you look at the numbers, there's a little bit of a difference when you start adding up, right? So you see $67 million. So we just went back, we did high priorities, right, low priorities, and then what's not here is more of our wants, things that are nice down the line to maybe consider as a project. So that's the difference between the notes. That's it. Right, that's all. I keep.
The pool on the roof.
And to respond to the increased, future increased enrollment, we took a look at three of the schools, three of the elementary schools in the, you know, location where these developments are being proposed in town. So we're going to be looking at, and I'll show you some very high-level schematic designs after this slide. At Ryerson, JFK and Pines Lake, some classroom additions. Again, there's just an idea of how many classrooms you could add on to these schools. And at APT and Thunis Day, they have a unique design to their building where they have classrooms that encircle the gymnasium. So the solution for that is to, because of the noise level and things like that, maybe putting a new gymnasium addition on those two schools. So you go to the next one.
Right, so if I can add a little bit, as a continuation of our conversation with the retreat, right, we knew that there may be a demographic bubble coming our way, but we don't know where it's materializing. So we're going to keep an eye on enrollment, and depending on where it pops up, we may have to identify one of these schools and have an option to maybe add an addition to absorb that, you know, that trend. So that's why we wanted to at least give you a sense of what the type, you know, the dollars associated with each school. So here's the first.
So at Ryerson, it's, again, it's a seven-classroom addition with some restrooms. Again, it's not, this is just a first-go-around, really a high, high-level diagrammatic schematic option. And again, we don't even know what grade levels, you know, this particular design has 850 square feet per classroom, and that's for grades one to three. And that's called a part of the FES standard, Facility Efficiency Standard by the Department of Education. That's the requirement. Different grade levels have different requirements for square footage of classrooms. JFK, this one, you know, we were able to design something, it's an existing blacktop right there, and even this particular building has a two-story. So even if you wanted to build a two-story addition, it's possible. Or design this one-story and design it for a future second floor. We've been doing that recently in a lot of schools. And that one includes a gymnasium expansion. Pines Lake has a six-classroom addition with restrooms, very, you know, conceptually similar to the others, just an add-on to the existing facility. And these are, APT and Thunis Day has very similar additions for the gymnasium. So it's really connecting it to the existing building, and now it frees up the space between the classrooms of the existing gym. The existing gym is to the right of the blue with the classrooms surrounding it. Yes?
So question, backup one. Oh, got one. So what would you do with the gym space that's left behind when you open the new one? Would that become classrooms?
You can convert them. That's something that we would.
Or would that be like an auditorium and then the gym?
Well, there's an auditorium on the lower.
This room? I'm sorry?
There's an auditorium on the lower, on the classroom wing on the bottom left.
Oh, okay, so they don't need an auditorium.
Yeah.
So what would that open space be from the previous gym?
That would be an educational decision on how, what would you like to have happen in that space?
Why build a new gym if you're going to keep the old gym?
Well, I would assume it's not going to be kept as a gym. I would assume it's going to convert to some other educational.
Okay.
OTT. Thank you. Excuse me, I don't see anything in here for Randall Carter.
It's coming up.
Okay.
In addition to the increased enrollment at those particular schools, we also, back in December at the retreat, we're looking at if the classroom, if we added a classroom addition at Preakness for about 180 to 200 students, that addition would be about $12.5 to $15.5 million, but that would not include a new gym or cafeteria. And the renovations, which I neglected to say earlier on, a part of the capital and long-range facility, high priority projects, include projects from Preakness, from the renovations that we talked about in December, such as the new elevator, brickery pointing, and the new lobby, and a PA system. So those are included in that budget. This budget is the remaining pieces of that, which are renovating the classrooms and abatement and windows. Here's for the developing of the district needs, this is more of a new educational programs being explored in the district. And I believe it was one of the goals.
Yeah, this was just mentioned by the superintendent just moments ago about IT rooms, information technology, and culinary.
And at this moment in time, we really don't have a scope to do any design work. So the budgets are really something that we've done in other districts of similar size. So it was about $600,000 to $800,000 for the IT rooms. That's a renovated room. And at Wayne Valley, the culinary, as was discussed, would be a small addition for that space, 1.62. Or, you know, or if there's space found in the interior, you know, we'd have to do some analysis, maybe it would be a cheaper renovation. Back down to Randall Carter for their elementary school, their new gymnasium. You'll see a design after this with about $4.3 to $4.7 million. And that, those numbers are coming from a similar project we did in 2018. And it was a smaller addition, and those average bids were $3.2 million. And these numbers include all the permit costs, DOE review costs, you know, all the other soft costs. So that's why the numbers are there. Then there was a discussion about a new bus depot. I have no idea how big, what it's going to be, so we'd have to, once the board decides to move forward, we could help with that preliminary design and budget.
Yeah, that's a continued need because of the, because bus depot is in an area that's prone to flooding. So we've been talking about it internally for the past, I guess, year, but.
More out than that.
Just me about, yeah, like where we're going to put it, but it's always been flooding for years, right?
But the thing for the board to understand with that is that right now, our bus depot is kind of in a far corner of the community, so.
Sorry, excuse me, Dr. Koma. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the talking in the audience, please, is interruptive. Thank you.
So just going to say that a centrally located bus depot, especially when you consider fuel costs today, makes a lot of sense because in the end, a centrally located bus depot will at some point pay for itself because you're not driving from one end of the town all the way to the other end. Even if it was split up over two locations, those kinds of savings add up over time when you talk about fuel every day. It's a lot of fuel.
Right, and I know the board has been interested in exploring electric buses and other vehicles, and I know it's something that we're going to continue to explore in the near future.
So Randall Carter, the gym addition, and again, this is just one quick concept schematic idea for a gym addition. And again, these gym additions that you saw meet the FES standards for elementary school gym sizes. They are by no means a gym that you can have a high school basketball game in, there's no bleachers, and a high school like this is about 40, 42, 100 square feet. A high school gym is 10,000, just to give you an idea. And then this is just a review, an overview, review of the projects we talked about back in, you know, in December, but even before that, probably two years prior to that, these budgets were developed. So part of this referendum were for the arts. So at Wayne Hills High School, the auditorium and music room renovations at 5.25 to 5.75 million. At Wayne Valley, the same auditorium and music room renovations, 5.75 to 6.25. And here's just some samples of some renovations, and you guys saw these in December, just some renovation project that we worked on in another district, another school district. So it just has a possibility. This is a new music room, and you can see that music rooms, they are all about volume. And the one on the left is orchestral and choral on the right, and you have a lot of acoustical characteristics that you need to include in your designs. And athletics, so for those potential referendums, there are some of the projects that, like I said, this was developed about two years ago. So the board has executed on a few of these projects since then. So if we're going to move forward, we'd have to, you know, look at these projects again, the scope, and refine the budgets. But at Wayne Hills High School, locker room renovations, 7.75 to 8.25 million. At the Hills for the grass field and backstop improvements, the field lights, replacing the stadium and the press box, the bleachers, and resurfacing of the track, $6.5 to $7 million. At Wayne Valley, again, locker room renovations, $5 to $5.5 million. At Valley for the grass field, the football sports lights, and replacing the stadium and the press box, $6 to $6.5 million. Continuing on with athletics, there are, for a new athletic space, which would include maintenance and storage, multipurpose room, lockers and restrooms and concession stand, both at the Hills and Valley, $14.25 to $14.75 million apiece. And these are just some, again, some samples of a project that we just executed on that's just finished up and being occupied now. Locker rooms on the left, brand-new building, and bathrooms on the right, and that's the new building, it's in Randolph. And then this is a smaller concession stand, just with concession and restrooms. That was done in 2012. And then we have a grass field and backstop that we did a few years back for two softball fields in Glen Rock. And new turf and stadium upgrades in Sparta. This is just from a college, but it was, it showed a larger stadium bleachers and a press box similar to what your school's at.
Right, we were talking about the design elements of the stadium piece, which has space underneath for storage.
Correct, yeah.
And uses for the teams, team rooms, those type of things. And then that would be something similar to what we, the design.
That was what we're talking about, correct. Other potential referendum projects revolving on security and site at Wayne Hills, additional parking, access roads, some lighting, security vestibule, interior and external doors, panic and fire alarm upgrades, relocating the main office and doing some cafeteria enhancements with access controls, $3.75 to $4.25 million. Wayne Valley, a similar thing, $3.25 to $3.75.
And again, like we said, we're addressing some of the vestibules throughout the district. We had received a grant, Alyssa's grant, for about $440,000. We're currently building those out in the next couple of months, so that obviously would be removed.
That goes, I think some of those are in the elementary schools, right?
Right, yes.
So at the middle schools, similar security upgrades was $675,000 to $725,000. And in the elementary schools, $4 to $4.5 million. And again, we would have to look into those, what's already been executed and update and revamp these budgets. And this is just an example, you already have some samples of your own, but this is an example of a security vestibule. In particular, the photo on the right is a transaction counter that has bullet-resistant glazing, and, you know, once somebody comes into the vestibule, they would get checked in, you give your ID, they do a background check. If you're good, you can proceed. If you're not, you have to go back out. So you're kind of locked in that space until you're allowed to go through. So the potential referendum projects that we were just talking about, you add all those up, and it ranges from $76.4 to $82.4 million.
Yeah, this area, I'll just touch on real quick because it's a very important point that the board has developed reserves over the past few years, and we continue to utilize them. This year, we have a new maintenance reserve that was established, so we're utilizing the funds that were deposited this year. So maintenance reserve, we're currently looking at doing a roof project at TD and a roof project at APT. And the capital reserve, we're looking, tonight you see an action-related, as discussed by the superintendent earlier, we have a security camera upgrade project. Again, that's $2 million as we currently budget. We expect that to be like a phase one. We'd like to come back because there are other areas outside of our buildings that need to be covered, including our bus depot. need to be covered, including our bus depot and our athletic fields. And we're also utilizing and continuing our science lab upgrades district-wide, which is probably, we're in phase four or five at this point. And the next round is going to Hills, which is about $1,005,000. So I just wanted to point that out, is that there are things that we haven't talked about that are being addressed by funds that the district has set aside to address, and it's not a burden on the operating budget.
And this slide is just an overall summary of all the different projects that were talked about, kind of all itemized out. The bottom left one really only took one of the three elementary school classroom additions, so I just selected JFK, having to be the largest. So we just added that, you add all those up, and there's your estimated project cost, 142.75 to 160.35 million.
That was the menu we wanted to come up with at the end.
Sort of GoFundMe?
Mr. Carter, can you talk about the impact that state aid would have on whatever number is determined at some point?
Sure.
The board chooses to go ahead, state aid will have a significant impact...
Absolutely.
...on the total cost to the community.
Yes, state aid is up to 40% of renovated projects. You would get back, like as a payback grant...
Debt service aid.
Debt service aid, thank you. And then for new construction, it's about $145 a square foot that you would, for eligible costs. And so eligible costs are defined by the Department of Education, so you have to, you know, go through that whole process.
Mrs. Kazan?
I was about to ask about the school construction authority, if there was money in there now, because I know for a while they weren't giving any out. It was a time period. But so you're saying that the different, the projects you mentioned with the add-on of gyms, would those be considered renovations versus new construction?
New construction. Additions would be new construction.
New construction, and the athletic fields and the bleachers, is that reno or new construction?
Some of them would be eligible and some would not. It depends on what they are and how educationally they're used.
So for new construction, it's $145 per square foot?
Right, well, that's what they're basing on, or 148, something to that effect.
So we'll get in more of a cost analysis at a future date.
Oh, absolutely. As you go through...
I didn't know if we were going to get anything, that's why I'm asking, yeah.
But what you do is, as you do the, you know, you do the projects, you would do the applications to the Department of Education, whatever the projects are. So when they do the review, you'll get back from them, it's called a PEC, preliminary eligible cost letter.
Yes.
And at that point, they'll tell you how much they're going to fund.
Do you offer?
Yeah, basically, yes. So you'll know right then and there, and then you can say to go or no go.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we're really, it's tough to estimate.
Yeah, not until that time, you're correct.
We'll get something, that's the main thing.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question, thank you so much.
I just want to clarify, so that way the public knows, the total estimated project cost that we showed on the summary page contain need-to-have and nice-to-have items.
Absolutely, correct.
You know, and we're definitely going to have the community involved in the decision-making.
Right, that's why I started with this as a high-level overview.
When you submit the paperwork to the Department of Education, what percent draw on has to be submitted to them? Like is it...
It's preliminary, it's preliminary, yeah. They don't want the districts to spend a lot of money to get, you know, construction documents. No, it's not even close to that.
Okay. So, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kappa?
I'd like the administration to come up with a more focused list of certain things we have to do. Like we know, the bleachers at both high schools are over 50 years old. They've lived their life. We're on bar of time. So to me, that's a project along with the other upgrades at the high schools for, go just beyond sports states. They go for the band and every sports team. It's not going to be a dedicated, my understanding, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not going to be a dedicated locker room for one sport or another sport. It's going to encompass everybody. The band's not going to have to stand up in the school when they'll have a room that they can warm up in before the game. For a football game, the soccer team will have a room to warm up for at the schools. And it's going to enhance our programs and going to enhance our facilities, which are really, and some of them in dire need of repair. You know, it's a long road. We haven't really taken on anything this big since the building of Athlete Way. And so I would ask Madam President, if maybe we can get a, you know, more focus, maybe we need another retreat, so that really gash this up.
I think that's an excellent argument.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Toback?
So just a reminder for the board that at our next meeting in April, our intent was to have the bond council and our financial advisor come to talk a little bit more about state aid and the total cost of the project, depending, you know, we'd get some kind of range, do some scenarios. And ultimately, you'll get to learn more about the actual financial impact of these projects, which is also an important step, so certainly we can work on all these things.
Absolutely.
Thank you so very much. Excellent presentation. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Moffett. Excuse me, I'd like to remind the members of the audience that until March 7th, we are still wearing masks up here at the Board of Ed offices, please, sir. We are still wearing masks. We're still wearing masks at the Board of Ed offices, sir, since March 7th. There is a sign on the front door. You're not in trouble. We'd be happy to supply you with a mask, sir.
Yeah, she's giving me one, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda items, please.
Yes, we have a few tonight. Emergent section R, administrative, item 1 through 3, we're adding T3, approval of HIB determination, that the Board of Education affirm the superintendent's decision on HIB case number 73/2021-2022, following an appeal as required by NJSA 18A:37-15, parentheses lower B, 6 and E. Under T, we're adding item 1 through 15, T5, approval of appointment of district staff. Number 5, we're rescinding the appointment of Gandhi, van driver, transportation, at $26.91 per hour, five hours a day, step 2 in the van driver's salary guide. And on number T6, approval of transfers, number 2, revised position from paraprofessional to SCPA in both columns. That concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda. And that one is, was not withdrawn as discussed in the executive.
Correct, thank you. Okay. All right. We have come to the open to public on agenda items only section. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Patel?
Come on.
This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter, please. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under old business. Thank you. Would anyone care to speak on an agenda item?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
My name's Robin DuHin, 36th Independence Road. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but after I heard the proposal to spend millions of dollars on new gymnasiums and new turf, et cetera, I would like to know if there's any money to replace the most likely original ripped, tattered shades, window shades that no longer go up or down in possibly eight elementary schools with no air conditioning? Or if the budget would include replacing the paper towel dispensers that were used when I was in school back in the 60s? Students used these unsanitary systems all throughout COVID, requiring them to use three fingers to wind down the roll towel, and yet in class weren't able to share a book.
Madam President, seeing no one else rise, I would like to call this a public...
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kumar? Okay. We're coming up to minutes. Action on agenda, approval of minutes. Maybe minutes, the... Do I have committee reports from this evening? Mr. Kusakis?
Yes, I'd like to report on the Technology and Safety Committee. Mr. Borchart and myself attended. We discussed the phone project update. The phone project was installed at Skylar Colfax over President's Day weekend. The system replaced the outdated phones and replaced the emergency communication system, also known as the PA system. The next school to have their phone system updated is Randall Carter. We also discussed the budget, the director reviewed district level subscriptions to ensure the district is getting a positive return on its investment. During COVID, we had a few subscriptions that we subscribed to, but there hasn't been that much activity, so those will go away, we won't renew those. We also discussed the camera project. The district is working with a vendor to assist with the install of this project and possibly have it installed during the summer. This camera project will have coverage inside and outside of the schools. We also discussed the Google Chrome extensions. So the technology department is working on a plan to remove Google Chrome extensions that are not educational. Students will have access to newly created Wayne Township Public School Google Chrome store, where they can download and install extensions that are verified by the department.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Kumar?
The Education Committee met tonight. Ms. Reichman, Ms. Putup, and I were in attendance along with Mr. Mingali. So we reviewed the February 10th agenda, and we went over a new volunteer club at Wayne Hills. We also discussed and reviewed the policy on honoring people's achievement. We reviewed the regulations, and we are moving forward with updated regulations. Students will be recognized in the fourth marking period for this honor roll, is the plan. And we went over high school GPA calculations and weighting of those GPAs. That discussion will be continuing, as Dr. Toback had mentioned, as part of his goals. It's just a larger discussion that needs to be really looked at. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have a special report by Mrs. Kazan this evening?
I'm actually at two committee reports. I can do the third report under new business if you want, or even old business.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Kazan.
Okay, I'll start with finance. We met this evening, myself, Mr. Padlock, Mr. Patel, administrators Bill Moffett and Cheryl Leidig. We went over the agenda items for this evening, the basic, the regular financial reports. We discussed the tuition rates for the extended day program in preschool, which will not be changing, no increase. We discussed the tentative budget, which was presented this evening by the business administrator. We discussed the capital withdrawal and the standard student service contracts, as well as the sale of property, which is on the agenda this evening to begin the process. We moved on to requests for proposals for services, and those include things like the architect, the attorneys, the auditor. The deadline to have that discussion is June, and we will be bringing a couple of those items to discuss with the full board at a future meeting. Special services, annual solicitation, that standard will go out for services for the special needs department. Health benefits were discussed, we're waiting for our final number. We've had some concerning estimates that may be a little alarming, but again, they're just initial estimates, I won't even say the number. We'll have CARM and everything. Food service management, just to give you a general idea, between July and January, 684,699 meals were served. We're doing quite a bit of work there, and a good job by our food service management during this pandemic. They have really stepped up with the foods to go home for those who needed, and it was expended to everyone with federal dollars. Our surplus projection is on target. We are concerned that there was a large increase in natural gas costs this year, more than anticipated, so that may have an effect on our final number for the year to go into our maintenance and capital, but it's too soon to calculate for sure. And we discussed the budget, which again, was taken care of with a presentation this evening to our business administrator. And we're doing a payroll verification process, which is done every three years, where basically every employee has to come in and let us know they're still alive and well and working in the district and prove it. So that's just a checks and balance required by law. The second committee was on March 1st, Tuesday, policy committee, was myself, Mr. Patel, Mrs. Wendtik, our board president, Mrs. Putup was a visitor. The administrators at the meeting were Paula Clark, our Director of Human Resources, and Dr. Toback. We discussed the public petition, participation at board meetings policy, which we thought was going to be on tonight's agenda, but for legal reasons, we've had to postpone it because the agenda was released to the public before we had our meeting. So that'll have to be moved to the April PWS. Same booster club guidelines and manual. We've done quite a bit of progress on that as far as whittling it down to only a few pages, and that'll be coming to the board when it's completed after our discussion. And we also discussed dressing grooming as another policy, but that's still under discussion, so there's nothing to report there. And those are both my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Action on agenda?
Madam President, I'll move to long agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kumar? Mr. Kumar? Well, Paul?
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Padlock?
Yes.
Mr. Kusakis?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have come to open to the public, general comments. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under old business. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Second.
Do I have any member of the public who would like to come up and speak, please?
Hi, I'm mean Wayne. The letter that went out the other day for the optional masks, I just wanted to make a comment, because in here, it states where if you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine if you're exposed to a case. So vaccinated, do you mean vaccinated and with a booster? Like what is that terminology, and why are we still making different rules for vaccinated versus unvaccinated when everybody gets it and spreads it? And will there be an option to test this type?
Cindy Simon, just a friendly suggestion in terms...
Cindy Simon, just a friendly suggestion in terms of when you guys are doing like the PowerPoint presentations and stuff like that? I can never see anything from back here, but apparently neither could anyone else because the print is really small. If there's a way to post that stuff up, because I actually went on the town, you know, the school board website to see if it was up there with the agenda, it isn't. But if you guys could post when you do PowerPoint presentations, so it's easier for members of the audience who either just can't see that far like me, or just because we're so far back or behind walls or whatever, so they can follow along on their own devices, that would be appreciated.
My name is Christian C., 16 Claremont Terrace, Wayne, New Jersey. I heard you mention the Booster Club Guidelines. A couple months back, there was a draft that was put out, and we started discussing it as part of the Wayne Hills Football Booster Club, and we had a number of concerns with some of the things that were in there that just I think is worth talking through. It would be great to get a copy of a draft if you have it before it came to the Board, so we could review it. I think last time there was a short time, and maybe that's why it had gotten moved, or maybe there was more work that had to be done on it, but it would be fantastic to be able to review that. I understand it affects a lot of people. There's a lot of policies, at least in the old draft, that were just, you know, old thin policies. There were some new things in there, but it'd be, it'd be great to have an opportunity to review that before the Board does vote on that. Thank you.
Any no one? Public session? All right, thank you. Old Business.
Madam President, would you want me to comment at this time?
Yes, please, thank you.
I'd just like to provide some information in response to recent public comment at one of our meetings. A recent article posted in Tap Into Wayne included misleading claims by a parent that the district was allegedly engaging in discrimination against special education students by failing to provide them with access to academic support programs available to general education students. This claim is both legally and factually incorrect. The parent has been informed that the summer program she was initially concerned about will be offered this summer. She was also advised that all academic support programs offered to general education students are offered to special education students, and there's no discrimination. The district provides all required services to its special education students and ensures their individual needs are met through the provision of programs and services offered in their I E Ps. Not only are special education students provided with individualized programs to meet their unique needs, but contrary to claims sent forth in the article, they are allowed to participate in all additional academic support programs offered to general education students. Specifically, the district is currently offering several additional academic support programs, which are all open to general education and special education students. Additionally, the legal standard for discrimination claim is whether district policies are arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. Here, because the district is in compliance with all legal requirements and obligations with respect to its special education students, and the basis for any student's exclusion from academic support programs is determined as a result of their academic success, and not classification is eligible for special education, the district's actions are reasonable, and any claim of discrimination is without merit.
Thank you. Any other Old Business?
Please have some responses to the comments.
I would appreciate those. Thank you, Dr. Hoback.
So just very quickly, for comments from Mrs. Duham, I would just like to respond that while, yes, the district's presentation about a possible bond referendum did include millions of dollars for athletic facilities, to correct the statement, the vast majority of projects presented included classroom construction and renovation of existing classroom spaces. The other point you made was about basically the issue of window shades. So if there is a teacher, or a paraprofessional, or any other employee of the district that sees that a window shade is not working, or it's in poor condition, they should see their principal and complete a work order. So we replace window shades all the time, and so the only situation where you would have a window shade that is in poor repair and not working is if there is no work order that was put in. So the other, the other point you made about air conditioning, that was not included in the referendum discussion at this point, although it could be, because ultimately, this was just a first discussion. The estimated cost is approximately $50 million or more. However, a good part of that cost is associated with electrical upgrades. And so the work discussed tonight includes a substantial amount of electrical upgrades. So what we're talking about tonight takes us one step closer to the ability to have air conditioning throughout the district, but like you said, that cost is substantial. The other point to be made is regarding our bathrooms. So our bathrooms have functional paper towel dispensers. Yes, it's true, they're older, but like every other school, they are, they're perfectly functional and they work fine. So just throwing them out, for the sake of throwing them out, is kind of a waste of taxpayer dollars. And the other point to be made is, again, if there is a paper towel dispenser that's not working, certainly a work order would probably go a long way to getting that repaired. So the other question about hand dryers, I am assuming that the fact that there were paper towel dispensers in question means that if you have hand dryers, right, hand dryers in the early stages of the pandemic, they were strongly, we were strongly advised against allowing electric hand dryers to function because it will communicate with the risk of spreading, you know, the virus. So that was, you know, basically the response for your statement. The letter about optional masks, again, we're not making different rules for people who have vaccines or don't have vaccines. We have no capacity to do that, but the state does. And so the issue is probably really more so with the state. And regarding the Booster Club Guidelines, so as far as those, so the Board is still working on and discussing some aspects of the Booster Club Guidelines, and really the goal was to make the Guidelines a little less onerous for the Booster Clubs. We're not quite ready to share them. Before they would be approved, I will personally meet with the Booster Clubs, and we'll go over all the Guidelines, and we'll be able to see a draft of what we have and make suggestions, and we'll see what we could do. So the process is not over, and, you know, we do have more to discuss, but that will all go to the Booster Clubs in advance of the Board's approval. Mrs. Kazan?
Now, PowerPoint presentations are usually posted after the presentation.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, for anybody who wants to see, we present these things to the Board first, and then afterwards, usually the next day, any presentation that we have is available to the public.
Okay. Any other Old Business? New Business? No, go ahead.
Just wanted to propose a tour of the schools, given all the possible changes. If, you know, I'm a new member, Mr. Patel's a new member, Mrs. Wentick, but open it up to the entire Board to be able to do tours, you know, from now until June, I guess, at various times, to be able to tour the schools. So we can, we can open that for discussion. I have another item. Some of the parents have concern about the functionality of the current book challenge form, and maybe someone can, can review if that's, you know, in the proper, proper standard or proper form.
Thank you.
Normally, when a, there's a member of the committee who has a concern, they should be directed to me, and I would be happy to help them with the concern I have, so we can go over the specifics and what the actual issue is.
Mrs. Kazan?
Well, I just wanted to give the Board a quick update that they know, maybe the public doesn't. I represent the 40th District for the New Jersey School Board Associations, and every three months, I attend a State Legislative Committee meeting, and they update us on what's going on in Trenton. And one of the main discussions on Saturday, which is when the meetings are, 9:00 AM in Trenton, sort of throw that out there, was the lame duck enacted laws. So those were the laws that were enacted between the election and the swearing-in of the new, newly elected members of the Assembly and Senate. So the first one is about hiring retired teachers to help us with our staffing shortage. That's something that typically wasn't done, is now allowed, but it's only going to apply through the 2022, 2023 school year, at which point it will be assessed it's effective immediately, and they'll determine then whether they will plan to move forward. The CTE, Teacher Shortage, that's Career and Technical Education, there's a shortage of those as well. So they've decided to make it a little easier by eliminating the practice requirement because these are professionals that are going to be teaching basically through the private sector, and in order to attract them, we want to make it somewhat easier. That is already effective immediately. All, all the ones I'm about to mention are. They had another bill about school security drills, and this has to do with ensuring students' well-being, making them less fearful. To give you an example, clear messaging at the conclusion of the drill that the event is a drill and no current danger exists, not exposing students to content or imaging that is not developmentally or age-appropriate, paired with trauma-informed approaches to address any student inquiries or concerns, no use of sounds or visuals that may induce panic or traumatic response such as fake blood, rail or prop firearms, or simulations of gunshots or explosions, et cetera, et cetera. That's also effective immediately. District website accessibility, this has to do with people with disabilities, requires internet websites and web services of school districts, charter schools, and Renaissance schools to be accessible to persons with disabilities. Again, that needs to be fleshed out at the Department of Education so that districts understand exactly what that means. It's currently also an unfunded mandate. For some schools, that would require a lot of work from their I T, and that's being discussed as an add-on to the budget for this year. So that's still on the fence as to how some districts are going to pay for that change. Board of Ed Student Representatives, we already complied with that. They don't vote, but they are recommending that every school have, every high school or district with one has a student representative, and this will begin next year, '22, '23. They're adding on school districts to provide instruction on history and contribution of Asian-Americans, Pacific Islanders, and they will be starting a commission on Asian heritage, which will help school districts understand how to comply with this law, and it also begins '22, '23. School District Regionalization, I won't get into, doesn't apply to us, we're already big enough, we don't need to regionalize or join any other school district. And this is a group of mental health bills, all of which have passed. First one is a Higher Ed Partnership. It's creating a grant program to encourage school districts to partner with institutions of higher education to train school-based mental health service providers. Youth Services Program Grants requires the New Jersey Department of Children and Families to give priority to certain school districts when awarding contracts under the Schooling Services Program. Wellness Grant Program, a lot of grant money is going to be available for these, so that's something for us to be on the lookout for locally, is that extra money. Now, this one is important for parents to hear. Anti-bullying Law Revisions, informally known as Mallory's Law, revises provisions required in school districts' anti-bullying policy, provides for civil liability of a parent of minor adjudicated delinquent for cyber harassment or harassment, and increases certain fines against parents. So I'm not quite sure how that's going to be doled out, but increases civil liability of a parent of a minor adjudicated delinquent for cyber harassment. District's anti-bullying policy must include specific consequences for a student who commits H I B. Currently, that's not delineated. Requires a principal to report to the superintendent if a preliminary determination is made under the school district's policy that an allegation is outside the scope of H I B. H I B report on a numbered form, parental guidance on anti-bullying requirements posted to district websites. If you're going to be held civilly liable, you're certainly going to want to know what the parameters are, and create a school climate coordinator. No, they're, they are going to create a school climate stake coordinator at the N J D O E, and that's effective July 1st, 2022. And if any of you parents want to look it up, it's S-1790, which is the Senate version of the bill, and A-1662, the Assembly portion of the bill. Oh, excuse me. It says it's effective July 1st, 2022, but in parentheses, it says, except the penalty provisions, which are effective immediately. Well, they gave you a lot of time. And finally, on the lame duck, Student Journalist Rights. This is about concerns over speech rights of student journalists at public schools and public institutions of higher education. The B O E must adopt a written policy, I guess we have more work cut out for us, Paula, concerning student freedom of expression, reasonable provisions for the time, place, and manner of student expression, does not protect language that may be libelous or slanderous, constitutes an unwanted invasion of privacy, is profane or obscene, violates federal or state law, so incites us to create a clear and present danger of the commission of an unlawful act, the violation of policies of the school district or institution, or substantial disruption of the orderly operation of the school or institution. That's affected, effective '22, '23. Something on the horizon, which will be coming to the Assembly floor shortly, is the due process filing law. They've extended that period for filing claims related to COVID-19 school closures, so that's for your special ed parents. And finally, we met the new Chair of the State Education Committee. Teresa Ruiz has moved up in the ranks, and now we have Senator Vin Gopal. Wasn't sure if I was going to like him, but he won me over. He had a lot of good things to say about how he plans to chair that committee, and one of the most important ones was the communication that he plans to provide to us on things that are in the pipeline, well in advance of them hitting the Assembly floor. So if any of my colleagues would like the rest of this report, I can send it to you along with Senator Gopal's, what's the word I want?
Information?
Well, of contact information that he shared with us, so that you can be added to his newsletter list. And the bill's on the move, I didn't report on, but I, they're part of the PowerPoint, and I'll be happy to send them to anyone who's interested. That's my report, till three months.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Mrs. Kazan.
Thank you.
Okay. Any Board Member comments this evening? Mr. Posakis?
I just want to acknowledge that this is Read Across America Week.
Yes.
And our elementary schools don't get as much airtime, I guess, as the high schools do, so I just wanted to thank Mrs. Van Derino and Mrs. Myers from JFK Elementary School for inviting me to be a guest reader last night on their 25th Annual Sleepy Time. And I also wanted to mention that Mr. Duffy, Mrs. Wentick, and myself were invited by Mrs. Mazza, Mr. Saznov of Randall Carter, to attend their Student Council Swearing At Ceremony on February 15th.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a move to close the meeting, please? Mr. Pavlak? Mrs. Kazan? And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.